Good morning, folks.
Good morning.
Welcome to the November 1st, 2018 meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners. And as is typical with our meetings, we will begin with a moment of silence. If you will, please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we, at this time, we move to public comment. First on that list is our Representative David Weisner from Back at the Gap. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is David Weisner, Deputy Garrison Commander for Indian Town Gap to give you your Back at the Gap update. As of 23 October, we've had over 11,000 personnel trained at the Gap. I didn't use troops, personnel.
Thank you.
We got that good. Once again, I just kind of like bragging on it, we finish up as the number one most utilized National Guard installation of the country. We accomplished that by exceeding 860,000 mandates, which in our business, that is a lot of use. So I believe we are giving very good value to taxpayers of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania out there, and being good stewards of it. That 860,000 mandates equates to 153,858 soldiers and airmen, sailors and marines came and utilized Fort Indian Town Gap and got just critical training while they were there. See, we have a busy agenda today, so I'll try and abbreviate some of our remarks. With that, I want to remind all of our area residents, we are in our second controlled burn season. We use controlled burns for the safety of the public, i.e. it reduces the incidence of range fires that we set due to our training going off our posts. So we control burn, reduce the fuel load. That season, it's really, it's a window opened up on the 19th of October and extends through the 21st of November. We give a 24-hour notice to the public when we're going to do that, and that also results in the local fire departments, emergency dispatch, so we have that. We've also instituted for our neighbors what we call the Red Alert System. It's run through the Pennsylvania. If you call me or get ahold of me, if there's any neighbors we have missed on it, we will tell them how to sign up for it. Basically, what it does, it shoots out a text message or an email that residents' choice of, hey, we're going to burn tomorrow, don't think that it's wildfire. And we have that.
Is that the same as the PA alert?
Yes, ma'am, exact same.
Because I've been getting the texts and they're wonderful.
There you go. So we have that. With that said, with all the weather we've been having and the wetness, we aren't going to be doing any burning anytime in the near future, I can tell you that, because conditions happen to be perfect. I want to remind everybody, we have the second busiest helport in the United States and certainly in the Army of New York Army Airfield, over 1,200 air movements per month. So we appreciate everybody's tolerance on the helicopter noise. We try and fly them on the other side of the Blue Mountain Low Level. Less people live up there, so everybody stays happier. So.
Very good.
With that said, that's all I have, depending on any of y'all's questions.
No, I would just perhaps comment, certainly you spoke of the importance of Indian Town Gap to the state and to the nation. It's also very important to Lebanon County, and we appreciate everything that you folks do and provide, so thank you for that.
Well, we appreciate the great place to live and work in Lebanon County, so.
And as you have said previously, I like to repeat as often as possible, when we have the helicopters or the ordinances going off, that's the sound of freedom.
It is the sound of freedom, but it can be troublesome if you're one of our neighbors, I can tell you.
It's okay.
We have one of our closest neighbors who we never even hear complain at.
Those of us who live near appreciate you.
David, thank you. Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Weisner is, of course, regularly scheduled on our public comments. Is there any other public comment this morning? All right, would you want to come forward and identify yourself?
Sure. Yes. Do I need to stay where I live?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking. Is this microphone good enough here? All right. So my name is Mike Mangano. Many of you already know me, I was here before. Live in Lebanon, Pennsylvania, behind Walmart 1460, Old Henry Lane. So first off, I want to thank everybody here for what you do, you know? A lot of times, you hear the public yelling and moaning about the governing authorities and what they're not doing or what they're doing. So from me to you, and also Mr. Klinger, I just want to thank you for everything you do. I know it's not easy to govern, so thank you very much for taking, you know, giving me the opportunity to speak what I'm about to speak about, all right? Now, this is an ongoing issue that has affected me personally and that we should all be aware of as Lebanon County taxpayers who are all paying for this, and that is the ongoing issue and willful misconduct of Christopher Houck, who is a Lebanon County Sheriff, who is continuing in this willful misconduct while he's on the job, by the way, that's the key here, while on the job, by having an ongoing affair with my wife Cindy Mangano, and again, doing so while on the clock. Now, I had a meeting back in mid-July, was it early July? I can't remember exactly, with Mr. Klinger. And it was brought to my attention because I knew something strange was going on with my wife, and I got to the bottom of it, and July 8th, 2018, bang, there it was, I found out about, you know, this affair. So I go to the sheriff and we talk about it, and I tell him what's going on, and he said he would look into it and talk with Chris Houck, and he asked me a few questions, you know, do I know of anything that he's doing that is criminal, you know, is he doing anything while on the clock, and, you know, a couple of different questions to kind of get a gauge on things.
Excuse me.
Yes.
This is, do you have anything new? We already have had this testimony.
Okay, did you get the new information that I handed in?
Yes, but it's a personnel issue, which we're not to respond to, but I just, you know, for the sake of, we did listen to you the first time and.
Well, you got new information here.
Yeah, but, so let's get to it.
Okay, all right. So the new information I have is this. First off, when Mr. Klinger said that he met with Chris Houck, and Chris Houck said that this was totally just a friendship, I'm going to leave with you this file right here, which has oodles and oodles of information that shows that this relationship is anything but friendship, okay? And I'm not going to read through all of them, but let me see here. Here's what he says in one of the messages. "I'm sorry, I didn't realize my love for you." And they were talking about something personal, and you can read in the messages here, and it actually gets pretty salacious and immoral, okay? So this file is for you, all right? There you go, Jamie. Now, new information that you've probably never heard before, this really boggles my mind here. Check this out. So in the new messages that you've never seen before, he says, this is from Chris Houck, this is what I'd like to know, if anybody knows anything about this. "And I love you," this is from Chris, "I'm not going to allow his attempts to hurt us." Now, this is interesting. "And now I know for a fact he's making enemies and upsetting the wrong people, lol, oh well." Then my wife responds, oh well, his bed. Now, first off, I'd like to know what enemies is he talking about? Perhaps it's, and I have names here, is there a Timmy or a Tim that works in the sheriff's office? Because Chris calls him out in this message. It says, "Timmy from work just messaged me, lol, says Mike's a crybaby, B-I-T-C-H." So now we've got somebody else in the sheriff's office or who he works with, Timmy. I wonder who Timmy is. Then, "My wife and him were talking about how, you know, I'm posting stuff on Facebook," because I told Chris, "I'm going to expose this, I'm not going to go away, I don't care if you're a sheriff, what you're doing is wrong, very unprofessional, and this is while on the taxpayer dime," right? So he says, "No worries, I'm fielding comments from recent posts that I posted." Then he says, lol, "Torell is pretty heated." Who's Torell? Is this one of the persons that I'm making upset because what's going on here is not right and I'm exposing him?
Okay, Mike, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to stop there because we're not, first of all, we have a full agenda today that we have to deal with.
Okay.
And I did, the last time you were in, I did explain to you that the relationship between the row officers and the county commissioners.
Right.
A lot of people do not understand that totally.
Okay.
But each one of the row officers, and that would include the sheriff, are elected officials, and they have.
I understand that.
They have autonomy for their department.
Yes.
Our main role as commissioners is to make sure that the row officers have everything that they need to do their job.
Right.
And to fund the program, but the row officers, and in this case, any disciplinary action they can, would come from the sheriff.
Okay.
We play no role in that.
Right, right. Now, I understand that, so then I guess I'm going to wind it down, but this is interesting. So I'd like to know then, why did somebody then give me the information, okay, that I ought to address the county commissioners about this and get it out there? Because there is that connection between the commissioner's office and the sheriff's office. So if somebody gave me the wrong information, maybe that person should understand what it is or how to go about, you know, approaching a very, you know, wrong situation.
Now that you understand it, maybe you can go back to them and explain it to them.
Uh huh.
That would be the proper thing to do, so they wouldn't be giving out misinformation.
Right, 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 right. Okay. Well, I'm going to leave all this information, this new information with you that you can look over, and like I told Chris Houck, I don't care that he's a sheriff, I intend to go full throttle with this to expose what's going on. And remember, what's the main point? This is being done on the taxpayer dime. This guy is a dishonorable guy, he, what he's doing is immoral and unethical, and people need to know about this stuff, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks for listening to me.
Any other public comment this morning? All right, then we'll move on to the agenda, and at this point, we'll.
Thank you, folks, take care.
Yes.
See you, Jamie, we'll be in touch.
Approval of the minutes of the prior meeting.
So moved.
Second motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. All those in favor of the minutes as printed indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved, and Madam Treasurer.
Okay, morning.
She ordered it.
We have receipts on October 30th and October 31st of $2,654,487.20. That's all is total cash of $4,048,436.39. Expenditures this week were $1,982,438.29. We have undistributed a tax claim of $9,006.2, so we have a balance of $2,056,992.8.
I move to approve the report of our treasurer.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Treasurer's report is approved, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our Human Resources folks this morning, good morning.
Good morning.
And you may proceed whenever you're ready.
Michelle Dush, Director of Human Resources, Leanne Shay, Human Resources Assistant. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, we have Alexandria Versaldson, Child Abuse Investigator, resignation effective November 21st. Robert Sutherly, Case Work Supervisor 1, retirement effective December 18th, last working date December 17th. Corey McKinney, Full-Time Correctional Officer, resignation effective November 19th. And Travis Smart, Probation Officer, resignation effective November 7th.
I'll move to approve.
I will second the motion with regret, the retirement for Robert Sutherly, but noting his good service to the county.
All right, I have a motion with comments to accept those resignations and terminations as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Under Ethimolay Leaves of Absence, Kiyomari Ponce, NBJ Disler's Office, seven weeks of Ethimolay, effective August 24th, returning October 22nd. Alexandra Versaldson, Children and Youth, 12 weeks of Ethimolay, effective October 11th, and again resigned during her Ethimolay absence. Sandra Dove Mendoza, Renova Center, 11 weeks of Ethimolay, effective August 15th, returning October 31st. Wanda Warner, Preparatory, 12 weeks of Ethimolay, effective October 22nd. Michelle Brown, Courts, two weeks of Ethimolay, effective November 8. And Samara White, MHIDEI, five days of family Ethimolay, effective November 26th.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those leaves of absence as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Under Changes of Status, Transfers and Promotions, I have a motion to approve Director of Probation Services Sally Berry and President Judge Tillawak's recommendation for pre-probation services employees, Brenda Santiago, Jody Little, and Susan Putt in the Collections and Discersment Unit to work up to an additional 2.5 hours per week, not to exceed 40 hours per week at their hourly rate, effective November 5th, 2018, through December 31st, 2018, or until the vacant collections officer position is filled, whichever occurs first.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Christopher O'Sides, Transfer from Account 1 in Children and Youth Fiscal Assistant in Area Agency on Aging at the Rate of $1,084.40 by Weekly, effective November 5th. Joseph Organzini, Change of Status/Demotion from Fiscal Assistant at Area Agency on Aging to Clerk Picus 2 at Area Agency on Aging at the Rate of $849.91 by Weekly, effective November 5th. Dawn Eversole, Change of Status from Acting Reporter of Deeds to First Deputy Reporter of Deeds at the Rate of $1,574.45 by Weekly, effective October 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those changes of status. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Under Other Transactions, the Clerk of Courts would like to hire Edward Killian as a part-time Court Clerk at the Rate of $12.04 per hour, effective November 14th. Community Action Partnerships would like to hire Fana Azella as a part-time Reentry Coordinator at the Rate of $14.83 per hour, effective November 5th. Community Action Partnerships would like to hire Scott Barry as the Medical Transportation Officer at the Rate of $962.91 by Weekly, effective November 5th. Public Defender's Office would like to hire Mark J. Smith III as Assistant Public Defender 1 at the Rate of $1,844.49 by Weekly, effective November 5th. Public Defender's Office would like to hire Alyssa Rodriguez as a part-time Secretary D at the Rate of $12.87 per hour, effective November 5th. And Recorder of Deeds, Daniel Boast, Elected Reporter of Deeds, at the Rate of $2,387.85 by Weekly, effective October 23rd.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those hirings. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All the Transactions Previously Read Plus the Following. Michael DiPaolo, One-Time Longevity Payment Detective Sergeant at the Rate of $2,336.43, effective November 8. Alexis Laiotas Leola, excuse me, One-Time Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Rate of $1,250, effective November 21st. Daniel Bolts, One-Time Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Rate of $1,000, effective November 21st. Helen Farmer, One-Time Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at $1,000, effective November 21st. Nicholas Dur, One-Time Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer, $500, effective November 8. Angel Guzman, One-Time Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Rate of $100, effective November 8. Adeline Kessin, Incremental Increase Telecommunicator at the Rate of $19.17 per hour, effective November 4th. And Elliot Katz, Incremental Increase Assistant Public Defender 1 at the Rate of $1,996.52, effective November 19th.
So I'll move, I'll second the motion to approve the incremental increases.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve those Salary Board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Just a second, Leanne. If you were paying attention, as were we, one of the things on the agenda was the establishing of Daniel Boast as our new Recorder of Deeds, and Daniel's here today. Dan, would you like to say anything, or?
Not yet.
Stand up and be ready.
It wasn't prepared.
So you get to see the new face in the Recorder of Deeds office.
Everyone knows where my office is, stop in and say hi if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Leanne.
Hey, under mandated conference seminars, I have Brandon Smith from Drug and Alcohol who'd like to attend the 2018 PAC DAA WITZ Tactical Assistance Day in Harrisburg, November 13th, $20 registration fee with mileage reimbursement, six credits mandated by DDEI.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second to permit attendance to the mandated conference as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Under Requested, I have Jeff Bowler and Marie Kribish from Area Agency on Aging who'd like to attend the 2018 Alzheimer's Disease and Related Disorders Forum in Harrisburg, November 15th, mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
So moved.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to allow attendance at that requested Area Agency on Aging Conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Nora Kreiser, Lisa Swinner, and Dominic Morpedo from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Public Utilities Commission Training in Harrisburg, November 16th, with mileage, meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement.
I'll move to approve the Area Agency on Aging request.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to honor that request. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Christine Kennedy, Gary Burna, and Ben Pulzinski from LCDES would like to attend Microsoft Excel Basics and Beyond Training in Harrisburg, December 3rd and 4th, $128 total registration fee with mileage and meals reimbursement.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second for attendance at that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, how are you? Would you like to introduce everyone that's here? Do you have some, did you have some other folks with you, or?
Yes, they snuck in. Troy, do you want to start?
Sure. I'm Troy Williams with Lebanon County Christian Ministries, also here with the Lebanon County Coalition, Dan Holmes.
Good morning, I am Crystal Blake. I am the Director of Community Wellness, Behavior Health, and Social Services for Welsh Mountain Health Centers.
I'm also St. Elma, NHIDEI, and I am the current Treasurer of the Home Service.
I'm Janine Malcolm, I'm the Council Leader for the County and also here for the Home Service.
I think that's all of us. Thanks for checking. And for folks who don't know me, my name is Mike Ritter, and I'm the Chair of the Lebanon County Coalition in Homelessness. So thank you so much for allowing us to address the board this morning. Sponsored by the National Coalition for the Homeless, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week has been held each year since 1975, the week before Thanksgiving, believe it or not, it's already November. This is a time when Americans begin thinking about the areas of their lives for which they are thankful. It is a perfect time for us to share our compassion with our fellow neighbors who struggle to maintain stability, and for us to contribute to a social movement dedicated to a world where no one has to experience hunger, poverty, or homelessness. In particular, the 15% of our county's children identified by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation who currently live in poverty. 15% may not seem like a large figure, but it translates into nearly 4,800 children right here in Lebanon County. Additionally, 48% of our county's children are eligible for free or reduced lunches at school. As for homelessness in particular, the Education for Children and Youth Experiencing Homelessness Program, in partnership with our six school districts, identified 351 students accessing homeless services during the 16-17 school year, an increase of about 70% over the previous year. Furthermore, a local review found that 733 individuals, including children, in 2017 alone accessed at least one of our various shelter programs. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation has also determined that 10% of our overall population here in Lebanon County is food insecure. While 13% of households struggle with severe housing problems, define as experiencing at least one of four problems, including overcrowding, high housing costs, or lack of either kitchen or plumbing facilities. The purpose of the Lebanon County Coalition to end homelessness is to provide leadership in the prevention and eradication of homelessness in Lebanon County. Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is one avenue we use to educate the public, draw attention to the problem of poverty, and build up the base of support in the community. We are very, very proud this year to be kicking off Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week with a special presentation by author and aspiring theologian, Mike Yankowski. Mr. Yankowski is the author of four books, including Under the Overpass: A Journey of Faith on the Streets of America, which highlights his experience with homelessness. For five months in six different American cities, Michael and his friend Sam intentionally, intentionally ate from trash cans and at homeless shelters, slept under bridges, and panhandled in order to survive. They chose to do this not only to better understand the plight of the American homeless, but also to observe how people interacted with those who were experiencing homelessness. His book captures this journey on the streets and relates to people, experiences, and revelations that have forever changed his life. He will speak and sign books at Salem Lutheran Church in Lebanon from 3:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, November 10th. This event is free and open to everyone, and hopefully there are flyers making their way around the room for that event as well as the others that we have. We then invite the public to join us at Texas Roadhouse in Palmyra on November 14th, 3:00 to 10:00 p.m., for a special dine and donate fundraiser. You may access a voucher for this event on the Community Health Council website or on our Facebook page. And while you wait for your table, you may, for a $5 donation, participate in our balloon pop and win a prize. Every balloon, as always, is a winner, and this year's grand prize is a recliner in your choice of nine colors graciously donated by Bob Hock's Home Furnishers. And all proceeds of this fundraiser benefit the Coalition's Youth Fund. Then on November 16th, we urge residents to wear a red shirt for Red Shirt Day, which encourages schools and communities to support assistance programs for children experiencing homelessness and brings awareness to this issue. Finally, folks are invited to attend open houses at Fresh Start, and if you have questions about that, Troy's here in the room to answer those. That's on November 13th, and Lebanon Rescue Mission in Agape on November 15th, and times for each of those are 11:30 to 1:30. For more information, folks may visit the Community Health Council website, or again, find us on Facebook. We thank you again for your time here today and your ongoing dedication to ending homelessness for our friends and neighbors in Lebanon County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any of the other folks with you want to say anything, or does that take care of it?
That takes care of it. That takes care of it. That's my job. or two out, but I think it's, we can't say that for sure, but it's certainly a theory that is logical.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a proclamation. Whereas, for over twenty-five years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including, but not limited to, the shortage of affordable housing in Lebanon County for residents with low income, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas, there are numerous local organizations within Lebanon County who are committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless. And whereas, the Lebanon County Commissioners recognize that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Lebanon County. And whereas, the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Lebanon County Coalition to End Homelessness. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, do hereby proclaim November tenth through the eighteenth, twenty eighteen, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Lebanon County. Further, we encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens, as well as private, public, and nonprofit service entities.
I want to approve the proclamation.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Proclamation is adopted. We certainly apologize that we don't have a newspaper anymore in Lebanon County, so I hope you brought your own photographer if you want to get it to the newspaper. If you'll just join us here, we'll...
Please, please.
Probably.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Please, thank you for joining us. No, thank you. Troy, always a pleasure.
Okay, the folks, Dennis and the folks from Leonard Shock Foundation want to join us? Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Everyone knows, I think, Dennis, our first engaging, but a few gentlemen would like to introduce herself for the folks here in the room.
I'm Tom Harland, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Shock Group and the Treasurer. Chuck Hall, one.
Okay.
You're also in the Board of Directors for Governor Dick.
This is a follow-up to the last meeting where the bids were open for the Fort Walk Platform Project at Governor Dick. So today, I think they're here to recommend the awarding of that, but before we get to that, a couple of weeks ago, Chuck, or last week, I guess, Chuck dropped off an application for grant funding toward this project from the Hotel Tax Tourism Funds, and I think you have a copy of that, or had a chance to look over that, and obviously familiar with the project, but they're requesting a grant toward this project, which the total cost of is four hundred and three thousand dollars. They're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars toward that project in assistance, and I know that, I don't know if you want to speak to it any further, but you're also going to be dipping into some of the, some funds that you guys have to contribute toward this project in addition to the grant funding that you got, so. Want to act on that, or consider that, I guess, before we get into this?
Do I have a motion to approve the grant of twenty-five thousand dollars from the County Commissioners Tourism Fund?
Move to approve, and thank you again for your volunteer work in protecting that great asset we have out there.
I'll second the motion with pleasure.
All right. A motion and a second, sounds like we're all enthusiastic about this grant, so with that said, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The grant is approved.
Sure. Okay, we were, as we were here a couple of weeks ago about, had opened the bid for the project we were speaking about. The low bid was, I can give all five of them again if you want, or we'd like to do that.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay, the lowest bid was Crylon Corporation, three sixty-eight, five forty-six, sixty-nine. Second bid was Woodman Contractors, three ninety-one, two twenty-eighty. Third bid was Empire Wrecking Company of Reading, four five, one ninety-seven, even. Fourth was King Bryant Incorporated, four thirty-four, five fifty-six, even. And the fifth bid was Construction Master Services LLC, four forty-nine, four oh one, even. Based off the figures that were given, just, and I talked to Mr. Harland, we're asking him to approve the bid of, base bid from Crylon Corporation, three hundred sixty-eight thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay, do we have any history with this contract?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we, Mr. Vendroy, we, so we spoke last time, and said there was some work done by Crylon Corporation in the past.
And Wilson Consulting would have reviewed it.
Our consultant, Wilson Consulting Group, has dealt with a number of occasions in their household.
And where are they from, Ken?
I'm not sure.
You can get it to me later if you don't have it on the top of your head.
It's in this tie somewhere.
Just let me go. All right, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the low bid?
Also move, based on the recommendation of the board.
A second motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt the low bid from, what is their name?
Crylon Corporation.
Crylon Corporation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. You're welcome.
Do you want to have Mr. Long up with you?
Sure. Ken, would you join me?
Warren, do you want to come up here?
How are you? Good morning, everyone. How is everybody doing today?
Doing well.
Ken, you're probably wondering why your family and friends are here today. I kind of told you, kind of a fib. I mean, we still want to talk about what we talked about earlier today, but the county wants to recognize you for all the hard work you've been doing with the cemeteries and stuff, with the veterans. Though I've only known you a short time, I know how hard you've worked on this, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate it, and others have noticed too, so I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. All right, and we, I can start by reading the proclamation, if that's all right, that might fill it in a little bit, and then go from there. All right, you? That's fine. All right. We have a proclamation, Jamie's going to read the proclamation.
Whereas Kenneth Long, a former Air Force Sergeant, is being honored for his concern and efforts in replacing damaged or missing headstones for veterans' graves in multiple cemeteries throughout Lebanon County. And whereas, while walking through a cemetery, Mr. Long and his wife Catherine noticed numerous toppled, broken, and missing headstones for veterans in cemeteries, but they decided to contact the Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War to discuss corrective action to alleviate this injustice to our veterans. And whereas, Mr. Long, and now with the assistance of others, replaced one hundred twenty veterans' headstones. Whereas, Mr. Long's devotion and commitment for over a decade to our veterans in making certain that veterans' damaged tombstones are taken care of exemplifies his integrity and dedication to our country. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of veteran families and all our citizens, are proud of the work Kenneth Long has accomplished, and express our appreciation to him for his many years of hard work and dedication to our community.
All right. Warren, did you have anything that you wanted to add, since you're here with the...
No, just, just, again, my thanks as well, for the organization. Did a great job, and just never asked for anything other than expensive. And they were pretty, and while the stones are free, somebody's got to pay to install them, because they have to be installed properly. He's been doing that.
All right, good. I'd like to move that we adopt this proclamation on behalf of Mr. Long.
I'll second the motion. Again, I'd also like to say thank you so much, on behalf of all veterans.
All right, with that said, we have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation honoring Mr. Long. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. And we'll...
Can he say something?
Yeah, I was going to say, would you like to...
Well, I appreciate the recognition, and I feel like I did a very satisfying thing, and I'm happy that we could do that.
Ken, I was curious if your wife was able to make it today?
Back here.
Yes, she is.
Oh, here she is! Oh, good. Wonderful. Well, because Catherine provided the information, and maybe there were a few phone calls back and forth that sounded a little bit clandestine, but it all came out for the good, hopefully. And again, there are, Veterans Day is coming up, and it is so wonderful to be able to recognize you who took care of all these veterans all these years. And I was wondering, they said that these are in, all throughout the county, in different cemeteries. Can you give us examples of the cemeteries where you go?
Well, the big one is, of course, Mount Lebanon. Mount Lebanon on the Soldier's Block. I replaced or added to sixteen tombstones, and thirty-eight on the grounds of Mount Lebanon. So it'd be fifty-four, just for Mount Lebanon. I put cemetery, or put the stones in seventeen cemeteries in Lebanon County, and did a pretty wide, you know, so...
Are any of these cemeteries, I know that former director in Veterans Affairs had a whole list, are any of these where there's no caretakers, any of these cemeteries? These seventeen?
Well, they all differ, you know, some cemeteries are well-managed, and others, of course, are not, and you just get what you get. I got good cooperation from a lot of managers of the cemeteries, so I was happy about that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, I would suggest that, well, go ahead, Warren.
Just one more thing. One of the things that Ken does is, when he finds a veteran's grave, he does a background check on that veteran, and he's got one heck of a book, about what, like, that, just on, he followed my uncle, only we didn't lose him, but he's got a two-page thing on him, and there's information, and I didn't know he was killed in Boston. So he's got background information on all this stuff, that's a pretty job.
The county's very grateful, and certainly the additional history is all great as well to be compiling that for the county. Thank you.
And we're going to present this proclamation in a minute, but before we do that, I would suggest that we give Mr. Long a round of applause for his...
I do have one more question, if I may. Mr. Long, your book that you've compiled, do you have plans for that, or is that something that our Scott could scan and maybe make available on the county website for people to do research on their relatives?
I usually donate whatever I do to the historical...
Oh, that's a good place for research, too. Okay. I just wondered, and want to make sure it didn't disappear, since he puts much work into it. Thank you.
Yeah, I work hand-in-hand with him.
Oh, there he is. Okay, I couldn't see you back there. Great.
And again, we'll need the doctor for at one of Friday's events. Congratulations, Jamie, and you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Would you like to have your wife join us for another photo?
Yeah, get her up here.
Come on, Catherine.
Yeah, you can join us, and join your husband in the photo.
Why don't you stand here next to him, and I'll stand next to you, okay? Just to meet you. Next to me.
You probably have to clean the floors after he comes in with his muddy shoes, right? Well, you're not allowed in.
We're in there. Everybody look this way.
There we go. Beautiful. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your service and... I was waiting to say, what you do for the benefits, I would love to talk to you.
Warren, get out of here.
I'm trying to tell you.
Why don't you get out of here?
Okay. Friendly, please.
Ken?
There you go, I'm kind of standing in my way here.
Kind of get together there. I want to get a little...
Where's Keller? Where's Lisa?
You had to go back to your office.
Oh, you guys want to get up there, too? Go ahead, fellas.
Look at this thing you don't see.
We don't have a rating.
Do we have everybody, or are we missing anybody? We got everybody? Thank you. I'll see you again. Thank you.
My wife, my wife's out here. She's so excited to have the revolution.
I'm glad you guys are coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you guys are here.
Would you like to have your wife join us for another photo?
Yeah, get her up here.
Come on, Catherine.
Yeah, you can join us, and join your husband in the photo.
Why don't you stand here next to him, and I'll stand next to you, okay? Just to meet you. Next to me.
You probably have to clean the floors after he comes in with his muddy shoes, right? Well, you're not allowed in.
We're in there. Everybody look this way.
There we go. Beautiful. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your service and... I was waiting to say, what you do for the benefits, I would love to talk to you.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Warren, get out of here.
I'm trying to tell you.
Why don't you get out of here?
Okay. Friendly, please.
Ken?
There you go, I'm kind of standing in my way here.
Kind of get together there.
Where's Keller? Where's Lisa?
You had to go back to your office.
Oh, you guys want to get up there, too? Go ahead, fellas.
You should look at this thing you don't see.
We don't have a rating.
Do we have everybody, or are we missing anybody? We got everybody? Thank you. I'll see you again. Thank you.
My wife, my wife's out here. She's so excited to have the revolution.
I'm glad you guys are coming. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're a tough guy.
You guys at the meeting are all...
You mind?
Yeah, of course.
Well, I have to ask about you. You're different, you're from New York.
All right. You know, I was...
What up?
Okay, let's go.
Where's, uh...
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
I was allowed to go to this, so...
Good morning.
Morning.
Would you like to make introductions? Are there any of the folks in the other seats with you?
No, unfortunately, we did not have a family able to come with us.
Okay, that's fine.
Fortunately, we didn't, only because the kids are getting so old and healthy now that they're all in school, and they can't get out of school to come and visit us, so that's great news that we don't have anybody with us, I guess. All right, well...
Well, I'm Rick, on the treasurer of the Fort 45 Foundation, was the president. This is my son Andrew, he's the president of the Fort 45 Foundation. This is Elizabeth, representing the CMN office.
We did it at the Alcoa plant, the aluminum workers. Eleven years, we raised funds till they shut us down. That's when we formed the 445 Foundation. Four four five is what our local union was. That's our roots. That's where we come from. All those years that we were doing all the fundraising in-house, raising the money, answering the telephones for the telethon, every person, when Alcoa decided to shut us down, said to a person, what are they gonna do without us? Those kids need us. The hospital needs us. That's when Seven Office and Andrew formed the 445 Foundation. We're a five oh one, three C. We jumped through all the hoops. You, as a group, including the mayor's office, have been supporting us and I, and again, like I've said every time, it's gonna be almost thirty years, but you're the only county commissioners, mayor's office in all the counties that's covered by the CMN that cares enough about their kids to proclaim this. Normally, in the past, we would do it, our check presentation would be at the telethon. We've changed that to now this year, we're supporting, they've changed the format of the telethon. So this year, what we're doing is one oh five seven the X has taken up the banner and is doing a pay-for-play, which is gonna be November eighth, beginning at five o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock in the morning of Friday, November ninth. If you really wanna know how well we've done this year, and it is a record year for us, everybody must listen to one oh five seven the X. I would highly recommend around five o'clock on Thursday evening. Put the word out. You'll find out exactly how...
That's November eight.
Because of your support...
November eight.
November eighth. Because of your support, the businesses of Lebanon County that have been great to us, the people of Lebanon County that have supported us, this is a new record for us. And I wanna thank all of you for helping us out.
Thank you.
You folks wanna contribute something before we do the proclamation?
Yes. Um, the, the, the 445 Foundation, like, like my father stated, the, the name of it comes from a blue collar, aluminum, breaking glass workers mentality. We still keep that mentality even though the members have moved on. We brought in new members. We have new family members with, we have new people helping us. We keep working and, and we take it in a, in a blue collar mentality to continue to work and grind out events that not only are going to allow us to put money together to give to the CMN that's going to help children at the hospital, but it's our kids, it's our neighbors, it's our sons, our daughters, our nieces, our nephews that are going to that hospital. And the big thing that we tried to point out about the CMN, and Elizabeth will speak to this, the CMN is all-inclusive. It helps and benefits every single child that goes into the hospital. So whereas there are certain fundraisers that help with a certain disease or a certain situation, when you have a child that falls out of a window, you have a child that comes down with this extremely rare disease that no one's ever heard of and it takes the parents three weeks to be even, to be able to even recite it back to you, to even begin to explain what happened to their child, there is no national fundraiser out there for those children. The CMN benefits all of them. The machinery that's purchased by the telethons, the child life program that is in the hospital, the, even the siblings programs under, under child life, those are all funded by the CMN. So the CMN not only helps children that are in the hospital, but it helps the families and it helps the siblings with their entire experience at the hospital. That's something that when we set out in nineteen ninety-two is when we officially started doing fundraisers, we decided that we needed to do something to not only aid these children, but to aid their families as well because we, as a family, were ailing, we were hurting. Um, I've done this since then as a big brother to every single one of the kids that go into this hospital because I look at the other family members, the other brothers and sisters that are there with their sibling that's in the hospital. I know what it's like to be that kid. And the CMN benefits those children as well. And they get to come out of that hospital and bring their sibling home. And that's something we've been striving for, for I don't know how many years now. Um, Elizabeth, this is her first experience, this is her first year with the CMN, so it's her first experience with you, the Commissioners. Um, so this is a learning experience for her, but she can speak directly to what the CMN does and how they benefit from donations like ours.
Very good.
Thank you. So we really appreciate the opportunity to be here today because without the people of Lebanon and the 445 Foundation, we wouldn't be able to continue to provide all of the things that, that were described. So it's not just, you know, child life, it's not just music therapy, it's equipment, it's research, it's enhancing the experience for everybody that comes and is touched by the Children's Hospital, the Penn State Children's Hospital, which is many children, not just children in Lebanon. So the fact that you are so supportive of the Children's Hospital and continue to support the 445 Foundation is something that we're immensely grateful for. Um, the Children's Hospital is growing, so we're building three additional floors. And so that's why it's even more incredible that this is such a record-breaking year for the 445 Foundation because that means that we can continue to provide those resources because we'll have additional space for patients and families because it's always needed. You know, like Wes said, it's not just someone who has a chronic illness or a disease, it's accidents, it's things that just happen. And people need to support Children's Miracle Network because you don't know when you're gonna need it or if you're gonna need it.
Very good.
And the most important thing is every dollar that's donated stays for our recruits.
That's true.
Every dollar.
It's completely local and that's one thing that, that we appreciate is the money is raised local, but it stays local. It doesn't go to some national office. All Children's Miracle Network funds stay here and will benefit Penn State Children's Hospital for years to come. So it's been, what, twenty-seven years since you've been doing this? And we hope that it's gonna continue for twenty-seven more. So, thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Wes said?
Yes, sir.
Whereas Children's Miracle Network Hospital at Penn State Hershey Medical Center is one of the one, is one of the one hundred seventy affiliated Children's Miracle Network hospitals across the United States and Canada that provide world-class care for every patient. Whereas the Hershey Medical Center in central Pennsylvania is the sing, in central Pennsylvania is the singular children's hospital and region's only pediatric trauma unit dedicated to the care of children from birth through adolescence. And whereas Lebanon County is one of nine counties covered by Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital where forty-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-eight pediatric visits occurred from Lebanon for fiscal year twenty seventeen and eighteen. Whereas the goal of the hospital is to enhance the health and well-being of children and families through collaborative medical care, education, research, and community service. Their mission is to generate funds and awareness programs for Penn State Children's Hospital, the children and families they serve. And whereas on November eighth and ninth, twenty eighteen, the Children's Miracle Network will take part in a twenty-eight hour radio marathon on radio station one oh five point seven the X to help children and their families at Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby proclaim the week of November fifth through November ninth, twenty eighteen, as Miracle Child Week in the county of Lebanon. Further, we ask the residents of our community to remember that it's all about the kids who are in need of healing and give support to the Children's Miracle Network in their efforts to help these children and their families at Penn State Hershey Children's Hospital to become a miracle.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for the Children's Miracle Network on behalf of the 445 Foundation.
Second the motion?
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. And Mayor, would you like to do, you have one as well?
Sure. So I'll just summarize. I just wanna thank you both agencies for what you do and we'd like to recognize the 445 Foundation and of course what the Children's Miracle Network does for our children in our area. I, a few years back in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, I believe, one of my very dear friends used, utilized the Children's Miracle Network. So, um, I understand what you do. Um, but again, recognizing the 445 Foundation and what you do, um, for the children in our county in the valley and also Children's Miracle Network for raising more than sixty-nine million dollars for Penn State Children's Hospital since it began locally in nineteen eighty-four. And all of these funds raised stay here for our children's hospitals. And, uh, I know that in, according to the U.S. News and World Report, twenty eighteen, nineteen, the Penn State Children's Hospital was named a national leader in three pediatric specialties. So that's something that we can also be very proud of. And your agencies should be very proud to, to support those efforts of that hospital. So now therefore, I, Sherry Capello, Mayor of Lebanon City, do hereby acknowledge the 445 Foundation for its commitment, support, and contributions to the Children's Miracle Network. And we urge all citizens to make a difference in a child's life and support this organization and their fundraising efforts, uh, not only during the pay-for-play marathon on November eighth and ninth, but all year long what you do and also recognize the Children's Miracle Network Week as well. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Do you want to do a joint picture or do they separate?
Two copies of the same proclamation, one for, for the network.
Do you want a joint picture or separate?
Yeah, we know.
Can we do what we want?
Yeah, the mayor can get in, get in here, too.
I'll set my camera up to get a picture of that, so it won't work.
Go ahead, Joe. He'll get it for you.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect.
All right, um, let me get it off a timer.
I know.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll let you keep the cash here.
There's mine, if you need it.
Right in the middle. All right, I'm gonna go one, two, three. One, two, three. All right, one, two, three. We're good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks again. Thanks for everything.
You need a date. You need a date, all right? Yeah, you owe me a date.
All right. Our emergency services, Department of Emergency Services, here they come.
Morning.
Morning. How are you?
Excellent, yeah.
Good. Thank you for asking.
Good to see you and welcome.
Thank you.
I think they do get the award for best dressed department.
They are. It's always how things change. All right, we, you have a lot of things on the table here, so you'll have to guide us through this process.
The first thing is we are asking you to adopt the updated emergency operations plan for the departments. It is a state requirement that that be updated every two years. This last update, we, we took the plan and molded it into the state's format, state system. Content hasn't, hasn't changed. The names in certain places have, otherwise the plan is pretty much the same as it was with updated formatting.
That we adopt the, the plan as presented?
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency plan as printed. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The plan is approved.
The second is asking the Commissioners to accept the, let me do this one first, the Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This is for the seventeen eighteen federal fiscal year reimbursement for the four positions that are fronted.
I'll move to approve the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollar grant.
Second the motion? I have a motion and a second to approve that grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
The third is asking the Commissioners to accept the hazardous materials and emergency preparedness year three grant. Uh, this is the final piece of the three-year grant that we started three years ago.
Our two thousand and sixteen.
Wow. Twenty years here, then.
Gary, I'll let you explain the pieces that are in place for this grant.
Um, thank you. So this is like Director Dowd said, is the third piece, the three-year grant. This takes the development of what we've been doing with the emergency response for an incident by rail plan and all the work that is going into that and puts it to test. Um, year one, we did a trans-care exercise, which is a functional tabletop exercise without a plan, which went very well with all parties involved. Um, this year, we're gonna do it with the plan in place. Um, and also sum it all up, abbreviate this entire thing, we're gonna do a full exercise, full-scale exercise by the end of the grant year, which is the federal fiscal year. So we have to have it all done by September thirtieth, two thousand and... Yes, because my years are awfully big. So...
Okay, I press earlier. When you say full-scale exercise, is that something in conjunction with the rail, with the railroad?
We're working on that, yes. We're working on it with Norfolk Southern. So they, they're great to work with in Lebanon County. Um, we have a few incidents that we may have, that we've had in the past, they've worked well with us. So, um, it's gonna entail the operation of the EOC, uh, law enforcement, public safety, all aspects of public safety. So local municipalities as well as the county government also.
The, the total grant amount is twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars with a local match of five thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Ken, move to...
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the grant acceptance. No? I was just wondering if you could be a little more specific of the type of scenarios that might play out in this exercise?
Um, right now, uh, what we're focusing on is the Bakken crude oil going through town, we have the main line that goes through the county. Um, as you know, it's just about everybody else who lives in this county can hear the train for miles. So it divides thirteen municipalities, that's thirteen, that's municipality, it divides the city and the county in half. Um, so the tank cars that travel through, a scenario involved in one of those, operational one of those, so...
I just, out of curiosity, um, there was a time when they used to take an assessment of what was going through the county on the rails. And I remember a time when it entailed reading the placards as they go by. Uh, is that still the way it is done since trains are going fifty miles an hour through the city or...
The, yes, that's still how it's done.
We're due for... How accurate is that?
The last assessment that was done was two thousand and fourteen. We did, they're, they're somewhat guarded about how much they will tell us, uh, the rail companies, about what's traveling. They'll tell us what, um, they won't tell us how much. So we were able to, to get that information from them, but the assessment doesn't go much further.
All right. Something else to follow up on.
So do you quantify it yourselves, or you, or you just, you just go with what, what it is, not necessarily how much?
Yes.
If I may, I do have a request in for commodity flow, uh, from the railroad. So we're hoping that we're gonna get some better information.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor to accept that grant. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Grant is accepted.
I would like to bring, uh, some information to the Commissioners. Joe Morales has successfully completed his basic certification. Um, we received the certificate from DEMA hanging on the wall. He is a state-certified emergency management coordinator at this point.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Joe.
You're an order.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you for the, the Commissioners.
I was just wondering if you could be a little more specific of the type of scenarios that might play out in this exercise.
Right now, what we're focusing on is the Bakken crude oil going through town. We have the main line that goes through the county. As you know, just about everybody else who lives in this county can hear the train for miles, so it divides thirteen municipalities, that's thirteen, there's municipality, it divides the city and the county in half. So the tank cars that travel through, a scenario involved in one of those, operational one of those, so...
I just, out of curiosity, there was a time when they used to take an assessment of what was going through the county on the rails. And I remember a time when it entailed reading the placards as they go by. Is that still the way it is done since trains are going fifty miles an hour through the city? Or...
The, yes, that's still how it's done.
We're due for... How accurate is that?
The last assessment that was done was two thousand and fourteen. We did, they're somewhat guarded about how much they will tell us, the rail companies, about what's traveling. They'll tell us what, they won't tell us how much. So we were able to get that information from them, but the assessment doesn't go much further.
All right, something else to follow up on.
So do you quantify it yourselves, or you just go with what it is, not necessarily how much?
If I may, I do have a request in for commodity flow from the railroad, so we're hoping that we're gonna get some better information. All right, we do have a motion on the floor to accept that grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Grant is accepted.
I would like to bring some information to the commissioners. Joe Morales has successfully completed his basic certification. We received the certificate from PMA hanging on the wall. He is a state-certified emergency management coordinator at this point.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jerry.
You're an order.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you for the commissioner's support in this entire process.
Absolutely. And I did run into some of the people administering the exam and other functions I attended, and they just jumped, I didn't ask, they just jumped out and said, what a great exercise it was. So you guys did a swell job.
With your help, thank you.
I just wanted to add, and I make an assumption, but I often speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I'm pretty safe in acknowledging how proud we are of your department, the strides you've made, and how you, you know, every time we see you, it's something that you can be really amazed at how far you've come and how on top of things you are. And that affects every citizen in the county, so we really appreciate what you're doing every day. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, and certainly we can't, nor do we want to take credit for what you folks do, but I think this speaks to the importance of getting the right people on the bus. And certainly, this department, that has happened, and we're very proud of what you folks are doing, so keep on doing what you're doing, and we'll support you.
Thank you. And one final thing, Gary Verner would like to talk about, is hazmat team for a little bit.
I'll make this as quick as possible. We all know what the state hazmat team was two years ago when I was hired in my present position. We worked very hard, and most of that work is because of the volunteers. I set out goals for our volunteers to achieve, for our team, for this county, and one of those goals was to become professionally certified. And by the professionally certified, it was through the Pro Board Certification, which is a crediting agency. And the purpose of the Pro Board is to establish an internationally recognized means of acknowledging professional achievement in the fire service and related fields. Now, the accreditation, the Pro Board accredits organizations that use the National Fire Protection Agency professional qualification standards, okay? The benefits of this is professionalism has long been a goal sought by members of the fire service. Entities that achieve Pro Board accreditation are recognized as having met the rigors of review by an independent organization. Pro Board recognizes certification from an accredited entity in a statement, is a statement of success as an undisputed market performance belonging to individual fire service professionals. Each successful candidate for certification from an accredited entity knows that he or she has been measured against the peers and meets rigorous national standards. I'm very proud to report that out of nineteen active members that I have that respond to calls day in and day out with the Lebanon County Special Operations and Hazmat Team, ten of them are now professionally certified and recognized by the Pro Board Organization for Hazmat Awareness and Operations. And as a whole, the nine that are not certified will be attaining that goal here in twenty nineteen, as long as everybody, all nineteen, go on for their hazmat tech certification. So I just wanted to point that out, that the volunteers, this is volunteers, people take time out of their own, away from their family, home life, whatever else they're doing, they're putting the time set forth in this, which is a huge feat. So, thank you for listening.
Congratulations on knowing.
Thank you. We really should recognize them at some point.
I was just thinking the same thing. Maybe we could have, you know, I know they all have jobs probably, and it would be difficult, but maybe we could establish a meeting time to bring them in and recognize them.
We can come to a meeting that you're having with them.
Yeah.
Every Thursday night we meet, so you just let me know and make sure that we have it all set up. Why don't you reach out to us with time and every place?
Yeah, we could all come the same, same night, that would be great.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Randy. Randy's chasing mosquitoes down here. All right, you wanna do introductions and then let us know what you're thinking, I guess.
Sure. My name's Olivia Binghamman. I am the mosquito-borne disease controlled for grant coordinator of Lancaster and Lebanon. And Randy is here with me from, go ahead.
Well, from the Conservation District, since the district will be taking over administration of the program as of January first.
Yeah, and I would like to publicly thank the Conservation District for doing that, because you were kinda homeless for a while, Olivia, so we wanted to find a place for you, and they did agree to work with you, so I think it's gonna be a good, a good fit.
I agree, I agree. So I'd like to start off with a little bit of a overview of two thousand and eighteen. Statewide, two thousand and eighteen mosquito season was horrific, if I must say so myself. We'll start with statewide numbers. In two thousand and eighteen, we collected six-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one mosquito pool positives. As a reference, two thousand and seventeen, we collected three-thousand-two-hundred-and-five, so this is more than double. It is also the worst season on record statewide for mosquito positives. We collected one-hundred-and-twelve avian positives in two thousand and eighteen, where in seventeen, we collected forty-two. And currently, we have eighty-seven human illness positives.
Eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven statewide. We expect a lot more, and in two thousand and seventeen, we only had twenty. So you can see the drastic uptick in mosquito activity this year. Back to Lebanon County, we had ninety-nine mosquito positive collections, whereas two thousand and seventeen, we had eighty-five. That doesn't seem like a huge uptick, but it still indicates a rise. We had one horse positive, wherein two thousand and seventeen, we had zero, and we had one avian positive, where again in two thousand and seventeen, we had zero. In Lebanon County, we have six confirmed human illnesses. A lot of these tended to be in areas where our program does not necessarily reach us in very rural farmland-type areas. I'm working on some education and other programs that I could do in those areas to help them next year, now that I know that it can turn into a serious problem if we have a season again like this year. Again, since this year was so terrible, we also increased our adult and larval control activities. We conducted four ULV truck sprays this year, whereas in two thousand and seventeen, we only conducted one. I wanted to just reiterate the reason or how we choose, make these decisions, so we have something that we call a vector index that we use to calculate risk in areas. We get this information from the data we collect from our traps. It's a long, drawn-out mathematical equation that I am not going to read out to you, but if you have any questions, I can make that available. We also make these decisions, these decisions based off human and horse illness, because if there is positive in the area, it's not good to have them around humans and other horses and things that could get sick. Are there any questions as of this year's positives? Yeah?
How far can a mosquito fly?
They actually aren't very strong flyers, and this is based off of their species. I don't have an exact number, but I do believe it's less than a mile.
Less than one mile. So that is why focusing on an area when you find a positive would take care of any others that got the illness from that one?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to clarify, so indicating, if I understood what you said, you actually increased your efforts four hundred percent, is that right?
Yes. So if we wanna move on to next year's grant, do you guys have copies?
I don't think so.
Okay, I brought some copies. There's four of them, so flip over to you, James. The first, yeah, if you flip over to the first page, you should find the grant worksheet. So in two thousand and seventeen, our total funding requested in Lebanon County was fifty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eight dollars and fifty cents. In two thousand and nineteen, I'm sorry, in two thousand and eighteen, was fifty-nine-thousand. In two thousand and nineteen, we're looking at a significant increase to ninety-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents. I'll do a little bit of a breakdown as to why these numbers have increased. Part of the reason is because since I will no longer be working for Penn State Extension, and I cannot be employed by both Lebanon and Lancaster County at the same time, instead of splitting my salary between two counties, it must be put on Lebanon County's, completely on Lebanon County. So the entirety of my salary will be on that grant, along with one tech, which is the same as last year, and an administrative help.
Which will all flow through Conservation District?
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Yes. We are increasing mileage under operational expenses, because the Conservation District has a vehicle for us to use, so we will be using additional mileage instead of purchasing or renting a vehicle. Additionally, we will be adding more control product and control equipment to the grant as we will be using a new control method coming up in two thousand and nineteen. That's pretty interesting, that has the ability to attach, a pesticide will attach to mosquitoes and allow them to disperse it, which has the ability to reach more areas that we are unable to reach. We also have additional money in there to purchase new computers, and there's also an increase in the administration line, just due to Conservation District operations. So that is the main idea, as to the increases in the grant. This grant has already been given to DEP and approved, so it's just here for approval from the county.
Accept.
Yep.
Will we accept any...
And I'll second the motion.
All right, have a motion in the second to accept the grant as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Grant is accepted. Thank you.
I did wanna say a little note of an additional activity that we are going to undertake this year. As a request from DEP, we are going to start collecting tick samples. These tick samples can be taken from any public use area, public parks, public trails. And while we do not currently have any plans to do any tick control, this will give us a numerical number that can assess risk for residents of Lebanon County of Lyme disease and Powassan and other tick-borne diseases. So these, we are collecting fifty ticks in each county, and then those will be sent to the lab at DEP and tested, and then we will get a numerical value as to risk in the area.
That's wonderful. That's, that's a good step.
Yes.
Thank you very much for everything you do, and thanks to the Conservation District for making it possible for you to carry on your work.
Thanks, and thanks to the commissioners for continuing to support the program. I mean, that's very vital to the county and the population, so thank you too.
Did you talk to them about the budget, the money that needs to go there?
No, I haven't yet, but it's just...
Okay.
After we wrap up the hearings, I'll give the conservation...
There's some administrative work we need to work out with the...
Yeah, I'll give that. There's one item in particular, the tire collection program, that allocation typically went to extension, we'll have to somehow route that through Conservation, so that's what I need to talk about.
Olivia, thank you.
Thank you.
Martin, you have a question?
Yeah, my question is, if I understand you, it's not going from Penn State to the Conservation District?
Yes.
They're gonna, why?
Statewide, Penn State only handled a handful of our programs, and Penn State and DEP decided collectively that they did not want to house a program in any county anymore. So it wasn't a decision made by the county, it was a decision made between the Department of Environmental Protection and Penn State Extension.
Okay. Now, when you, when you, well, you're done at the end of the year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, this may take over?
The Conservation District offered... Randy's chairman of the Conservation District.
Okay, like, okay, next year, how many people are gonna be involved in this program? I mean, actually are in the field?
There's going to be the two of us.
The two of you?
No, me, along with a seasonal technician that I get every year.
Randy just represents the Conservation District.
Okay.
He's not part of the program.
So you're still here as a mosquito person?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, and it's you and another person.
Yes.
Is that person full-time or part-time?
They are part-time with the program, yes.
So you're the only full-time person?
Yes.
How much equipment do you have? In other words, you have one truck?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
With a spraying, a very small spraying device on? The point I'm getting, when you're out there, your main purpose is to collect samples and identify carriers of western alvarus, true?
We collect that data so that we can make decisions as to what control needs to be done in certain areas.
Right, but your spraying is secondary?
I would not necessarily agree, just due to the fact that our collections, we do solely for the purpose as to make those decisions. So we are doing our collections for the sprays, if that makes sense.
How much area can you cover in days' time? In other words, what I'm saying, like you just said, this was the worst year ever.
Mm-hmm.
And I was here a couple weeks ago, and I encouraged these people, the commissioners, you're gonna have to spend a lot more money on this. This is gonna get worse, a lot worse. So you gotta put more people on, you gotta get more spraying devices.
Martin?
Martin, they, they increased the efforts in her presentation.
I heard that.
Four hundred percent.
Four hundred percent.
And it attaches to the mosquitoes. Now, the mosquitoes will also carry the spray to other areas that they go that she can't spray.
That's a different kind of control, but this is a new, a new project that we are implementing, that hopefully can expand our reach.
I see it. Liz, you asked in the beginning how far a mosquito can fly. I have done extensive research. I live in Ebenezer. There's, mosquitoes travel as far as from Reading, Pennsylvania, just to bite me. They can go a long distance, believe me. But this, I haven't read yet about this program where you inoculate some mosquitoes and they carry it to the other mosquitoes, correct?
Yeah.
Now, that'll be interesting to watch, because we gotta do something. I mean, this year, like you said, has been horrendous. So, okay, that's, that was my question.
I can share with you the information of the product that we are planning on using that has the ability to move product.
And this is a new program?
It is new.
Okay.
Yep.
It's never been tried, let's say, in the southern United States?
No, last year, DEP did a trial, or this season, DEP did a trial in Dauphin County.
Okay.
Due to how wet this year was, we couldn't be super conclusive of the efforts, but it seemed good enough to move on to other counties.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very clear and enlightening, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No mosquito, you gotta get that big mosquito you used to bring in here.
He didn't leave that for you, huh?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Fuzzy the mosquito, look him up online, there's a video of it.
He's probably in the closet, in the hag, though, he's gotta work here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have several issues on the table today.
Yes, sir.
Wanna introduce yourselves again for the, some of the folks here that may not know you?
That's Sue Bowman, Lebanon County Regional Authority.
And Dan Lyons, Lebanon County Regional Authority.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I have two pieces of CDDG, Community Development Block Grant business this morning, related to the application, the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen application that we'll be submitting to the state tomorrow. We were here two weeks ago and had most of that business taken care of, but these were the two outstanding items. The first is the cooperation agreement between the...
Fuzzy the mosquito, looking up online, there's a video of it.
He's probably in the closet, he's got a work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm listening to page one, which is just... Have the mosquito before I...
She's good. You know, we're serious here. I don't want to say her name, Martin. You know, six hundred, it's the first day after page.
So that puts... So that will, this grant has the ability to be used for all the reasons, so they need to know your...
She did it with Lynch, Martin, that right there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's so near. It's good. It's good morning.
I didn't, I heard about it, but I didn't... Thank you.
We have several issues on the table today.
Yes, sir.
Wanna introduce yourselves again for the, some of the folks here that may not know you?
Okay, Datsi Boman, Lebanon County Redeemer Authority.
And Dan Ryan, Lebanon County Redeemer Authority.
All right.
Okay, thank you. I have two, uh, this is a CDVG, Community Development Block Grant Business this morning, um, related to the application, the fiscal year two thousand eighteen application that will be submitted to the state tomorrow. Uh, we were here two weeks ago and had most of that business taken care of, but these were the two outstanding items. The first is the cooperation agreement between the county of Lebanon and South Lebanon Township, which is the, which is the only entitlement municipality uh in the state's program in Lebanon County. And the state requires a cooperation agreement between the county and South Lebanon because the state contracts solely with the county and then entrusts the county with administering South Lebanon's program as well. And this is an agreement that uh historically has been a three-year agreement, so the last time this agreement was uh entered into was two thousand fifteen. Shortly after that agreement was entered into, this, the uh State Department that it, it manages the CDVG program released a new model template for the cooperation agreement that they're asking their grantees to use, and it is a one-year agreement. So that's what we have uh to date. The South Lebanon Supervisors uh signed the agreement at their meeting last week. They have two copies of that here, and they were asking me to approve it, so...
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the uh cooperative agreement between Lebanon County and South Lebanon Township. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. The second item of business is related to uh Section five oh four, which is a civil rights anti-discrimination statute uh related to persons with disabilities. The, the county is uh tasked with, with ensuring that no one is discriminated uh against on the basis of disability when it comes to access to federally funded programs that the county administers, such as the CDVG program. And uh, the county has a history of, of um enforcing Section five oh four statute uh with uh committees that made improvements to county facilities for accessibility modifications, things of that nature. The, with, with this year's CDVG application, the state has asked all their grantees to uh recognize their Section five oh four officer publicly at a meeting, and then to post a notice publicly on your ground. So that's what this is. This is a, uh, I'm asking you to make a motion recognizing Jamie Bolden as the county's Section five oh four officer, and then also to post a notice identifying Jamie and his contact information somewhere in the municipal building. Is there a salary that goes with that?
Negotiable.
He wears more hats than anybody else in the county.
Got a lot of titles. Just to add, to add to that, if I could, before they act, um, there, there has been in a committee um in the past, which you wanna resurrect, I guess, or you wanna make sure we, we consider the CDVG allocations before they're approved, that's what they're requiring, so...
That's right. In the past, the, the county's had a Section five oh four committee on, on which Jamie served, uh, and that committee was tasked with inspecting county properties and making recommendations for accessibility improvements. And that exercise was conducted twice, first in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, and then again around the year two thousand, and both times the committee's uh recommendations were implemented, and then the committee kind of went silent, went inactive for a time. And the state is asking us to reinvigorate that committee, uh, not only for the purpose of ki- kind of conducting that facilities inspection again, but they would like to see it remain active, uh, I mean, at least once a year to review the CDVG application of way and all the activities that are proposed. That was not a requirement for this year's cycle, just this sort of uh recognition of the officer, but that's coming, so probably in the coming year, we'll have to uh reestablish that committee.
And one more add to that, the, as far as inspections go, we've not discontinued inspections, in fact, probably the opposite. The safety committee does inspect all of our facilities um annually as part of, of our uh carrier's, carrier requirement, and so when we do that, we also, you know, if there's anything that's uh in disrepair, you know, so as far as an ADA facility or anything like that, it gets addressed.
Is there anything that keeps the same committee from serving both?
I don't know. Maybe the county safety committee could also serve as that committee.
Seems to me it would be redundant if you didn't.
Uh, possibly. I, I don't, I'm not familiar with your safety committee. I know, looking through historical documents, that the five oh four committee, when it existed, included some county officials. It actually included Jamie, included a commissioner, and, but it also had, uh, half the members were disability advocates. So they, and I don't know if that was the required composition of the committee.
I don't think it was. I think that we included them.
Okay, we can look into it. Yeah. Don't want to duplicate anything.
I think our building grounds supervisor, as well as a time repairer, I'm sure they all have our results on. So that's something we can consider, we can talk, talk about safety committee, see if that might fit the, whatever definition they have.
Great. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve um the formation of the committee.
No, that's to appoint.
To appoint Jamie to represent us in the public and on the committee.
Second motion to approve your resume.
All right, I have a motion and a second to uh give Jamie that designation, and all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered, Jamie, congratulations.
Should we get a picture?
We have a proclamation. Okay, what else?
Okay, the next item is uh with the redevelopment authority as, acting as the city Lebanon Land Bank Administrator. We have provided to the commissioners property descriptions for four properties that the land bank may be interested in acquiring prior to the judicial sale. As of yesterday, all four of those properties still have outstanding taxes, none of them have been paid at this point. So in keeping with the cooperation agreement that was uh for between the city land bank and the county commissioners, we're asking for the county's approval of all or any, however we choose to act on this, of the properties that we submitted.
Okay, I'm going to approve all four as presented.
Can you mind second?
No, I don't mind seconding it. Um, before I do second, I would just like to say again that I appreciate you providing the, the board of commissioners with information on those properties, and I think that was something that I advocated for, and I think it's a, at least gives us a uh, an opportunity to review those and uh see if they're legitimate, and uh I reviewed them closely, and I gave, I liked the information that you gave. Uh, in, in all cases, I think they're not occupied, so I can at least feel that I'm not playing a role in putting someone out of their home, uh, at least at the, the present time, so I, I will second the motion, so we have a motion and a second.
Also, that's...
Sure.
Bill's acknowledging the, the clarity of, of each property, and I've communicated that to you as well. I thought it was well done, very clear, and uh, and so I appreciated all that detail. Thank you.
And under comments, I respectfully have a philosophical difference on this particular issue, um, and so I have not hidden behind anything that I shared previously. Um, I think you guys do a stellar job in what you do, and this particular program I disagree with, so...
All right. Any other discussion or questions, anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the four properties that were presented to give permission or approve, root for the city to accept those properties, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries two to one.
Thank you. Two and a second. Thank you.
I think I can see it tomorrow, if I have a chance, I can pitch it by...
By right now?
It doesn't have to be that, I have my own members tomorrow morning.
No, let me...
Is it the top of your desk there?
Oh, geez, I remember. Bill, we have to submit this tomorrow, so if you give him a seat, he'll have to take a moment, he can take the floor.
It is a C, yes. One thing, if you have a single...
If you did have the copy, then we can...
Yeah.
Just one dose.
Two pills.
Just one. Just one. Just one. Just one dose. 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 Okay, first I've got some um appointments, reappointments and resignations from um county advisory boards, the first being um with the Children and Youth Advisory Board, there are four members whose terms will expire December thirty-first, and all four have agreed to another three-year term, and have reappointed their uh, their next term will go till December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. They are Mark Hess of Lebanon, Keith Shields of Lebanon, Kim Miller of Richland, and Sue Warner of Jonestown, who reappointed.
I'll move to approve the Children and Youth reappointments.
Second motion? I have a motion and a second to appoint those folks, reappoint those folks to the Children and Youth Board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. Okay. Uh, for the Lebanon County Commission for Women, we have uh two resignations and one individual whose term will, will expire and is thus is not wished to be reappointed. Uh, the resignations are Todd Snovel, who resigned August of two thousand eighteen, whose term expired December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen, and Susan Blough, who resigned September of two thousand eighteen, whose term expired February twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-one. So take action to uh accept those resignations. So...
Second?
I have a motion and a, and a second to accept the two resignations from the Commission for Women Board, and all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. And Jane Osweack will, uh, her term will expire on November thirtieth and is not, is not seeking a second term, not leaving early, it's just gonna...
We need to accept that as well?
No, it's just a, okay, it's a term, yeah. And then uh some new members for the Commission for Women that are being recommended to you are Amanda Davis Blue, Amand, Amanda Davis Bowie, Rezi De La Torres Metos, and Emily Longner. Her term is what, did they? Uh, I think those would all go to February of twenty, no, wait a minute, let me check that. If I can, I'll check that. They're three-year, three-year term? Yes, two, yeah, twelve, thirty-one, or twenty-one.
I'll move to appoint the three women, Amanda, is it Ross, and Emily, to the Board of the Women's Commission.
Second? All right, I gotta have a motion and a second to make those appointments. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Okay? Uh, next I have um two more applications for hotel tax tourism grants. The first being from the Community of Lebanon Association, Lebanon Two Thousand Foundation. They are requesting a grant for the forty-second annual Lebanon Holiday Parade, and it uh attracts about three thousand visitors to the city for the annual parade. They would like to add a uh, a balloon this year at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars that, that can be um towed through the parade, I guess you'd say, and, and um they're asking for that twenty-five hundred dollars as a grant toward the parade, total project cost is sixteen thousand dollars. Okay? Move it.
I'll second the motion for the twenty-five hundred dollars.
All right, I have a motion and a second to grant twenty-five hundred dollars from the um commissioners administered uh Tourism Fund. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. And the Friends of Coleman Memorial Park would like to request seven hundred and fifty dollars toward their annual, uh, sixth annual Lebanon Kris Kendall Market, which um is going to be held at Coleman Park, and the total cost of their project is fifteen hundred ninety-seven dollars for the market.
I'll make a motion to approve seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Kris Kendall Market.
Second motion? Motion and a second, uh, to approve seven hundred and fifty dollar grant to Kris Kendall Market. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. I have a request for Liquid Fuels County Aid, number of them here, actually. First one being for South Lebanon Township, they would like to use their allocation to purchase ice control salt for their two thousand nineteen season, total cost of ten thousand dollars, their grant would be nine thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars. Swetar Township intends to use theirs for lime painting, the total cost of that project ten thousand dollars, their allocation would be four thousand five fifty-five.
What, which means of value was that, sorry?
Swetar.
Thank you.
West Cornwall Township would like to use their allocation also for pavement markings, total cost two thousand fifteen dollars, their allocation would be one thousand nine hundred seventy-six. And West Lebanon Township would like to apply theirs toward winter salt as well, um, the amount of a thousand dollars, their allocation toward that would be seven hundred eighty-one dollars. We'll approve those allocations.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the Liquid Fuels allocations as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Stainless Transportation for a moment. On the Phase Seven project of the Lebanon Valley Rail to Trail, which runs from um Twenty-Fifth Street, West Lebanon Township, north into North Lebanon Township, Long Lane and beyond eventually, um, there were some overages in the cost of that project, this is the same one that has the tunnel included and so on. And uh, John Fitzkey, I'll give all the credit to, to John, he'll give the credit then onto some of the PennDOT staff, but John worked very, very hard on trying to acquire some additional funding to uh underwrite those additional costs and has succeeded in that, so it requires a resolution adopted by the board for acceptance of tradition, of, of additional funds from the Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP funds, and in the amount of three hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. He did work his magic, didn't he? Yeah, he did. Um, it's uh, this resolution not only will accept those funds, but it also authorizes John to sign and execute all documents and materials related to the reimbursement agreement for those funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh use of TAP funds and giving John signatory authority.
Okay. I'll second it with the comment that they continue to um be supported by PennDOT and so on with uh, because they produce results that are on time and within budget in most cases unless there's some extenuating issue. But those are the kind of things, because of the commissioners' support and that, that team that they have on the uh rail trail side, it really does go to the quality of life of our county, and what a great, what a great job they're doing.
Yeah, there's no question, not only with PennDOT, but also with the DCR. The more, the more they complete, you know, the more successful they are at getting more completed, and that's what, that's what these agencies like to see, is these things being carried out, and I know that um...
Every mile.
Yeah, the next step in the process is there's, at this point, there's a gap um, you know, between Chestnut Street and, and West Lebanon Township, and they have very, various uh ideas on how to get from point A to point B, and um they've, they've now gotten John, again, credit to John, got, got an audience with one of the Deputy Secretaries at DCR, and have an audience with them later in November to see if they can get that, go have an audience with them later in November to see if they can get that, if they'll all get some DC opportunity to do that, so you wouldn't get this recognition and attention unless, unless it's a good, successful project. So I have a motion and a second to accept this grant and to designate John Fitzkey as the vote to die in that process, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Okay, and the last item I have are two disabled veteran real estate tax exemptions. They are for Doris, Doris Williams of Linwood Drive in Palmyra, and John Schaper of Homestead Drive in Lebanon, both have met the criteria needed, and those approval letters are attached.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve those two real estate tax exemptions for two veterans or veteran survivors, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So ordered. Got some final wrap-up of budget hearings this afternoon, starting at 1:00. Should finish them off. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
We are adjourned.